Okay, welcome back to the second session of Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, December 2nd. Before we get started into our public hearing and scheduled delegations, I know our Director of Infrastructure and Economic Development wanted to make a note to council.
Thanks Mayor Given. In the report that was presented earlier this afternoon regarding the redevelopment of the Park Hotel site, I was asked how many residential units were going to be included in the build. I responded 100, but the actual number is 64.
Thanks for that quick correction. Appreciate Director Glavine sharing that with council and correcting the public record. And my understanding was that you followed up with the media immediately afterwards. And so just let councils aware that that has been corrected everywhere that we could. Thanks Director Glavine for acknowledging that. So we'll move into our scheduled delegations. And we first have the Grand Prairie Catholic School Board. I see a number of representatives from the school district here. Invite you to come forward. It looks like we have enough chairs for almost everybody. But anybody who does come forward, please welcome to the presenters table if you'd like to introduce yourselves and make a presentation to council. Welcome everyone.
Michael Wallad, I'm the Chair of the Grand Prairie District Council School Board.
Carl Gurman Superintendent of Schools.
Mike Popek Vice Chair.
Welcome. It's a pleasure to have some of our colleagues in locally elected government here to join us today. A pleasure to have you all here.
Thank you, Mr. Given. I'll start with the presentation and then trustees will follow up as well. So we provided with you a sheet in advance regarding the lack of pedestrian crossways and traffic signals on 132nd. Not anything that would be necessarily new to you, but we thought we would bring it to your attention yet again because we are deeply concerned about the safety of students as well as the safety of the number of our staff. So some of our staff that work in the north part of the city, specifically at St. John Paul II, are not wealthy enough to own cars. And so they walk from the apartments or rentals that are in the area and they have to use the 132nd access to get to work in addition to the students. St. John Paul II currently is a K, or sorry, it's a grade eight to 11 school and next year it will be a grade eight to 12 school with 822 kids. So the last time we spoke, there were 400 in that school. This year there's 600, the following year there's 800, year after that 922, and then over 1,000 year after that. So very quickly, that school starts to grow and adds a whole new dynamic to transportation because of the age of the drivers. So specifically, I'm just gonna draw on a map and then I'll get you maybe if you wouldn't mind putting the doc camera.
We're gonna watch while you draw it. It'll be even more.
You're gonna watch while I draw?
This would be like one of those explainer videos.
I know, it could be on YouTube, just nobody would watch it. The reason that we're here today is a number of us have either been in that area or we transport people in that area. One of the things I did this summer was actually late summer and into the September months is actually bike in the area. So I biked all the schools throughout the city to find out what's the routes that students actually use. So instead of just getting in my car and driving and taking the roadway, I actually took the paths that students did. And so when I was biking, I wore my helmet and I wore my orange vest. So the orange vest isn't here as a protest, but it's here to say, this is the level of safety that I had on myself to try to make sure that drivers actually saw me. One of the biggest areas in that neighborhood is, and I know the developer has done a lot of work, there is a sidewalk through to here and then for a very short period of time there's a sidewalk and then it ends. There is nothing in this area. The sidewalk then coming out of Arbor Hills comes up to here and then later on is joined here in St. Catherine's and then in front of the co-op, there's a sidewalk. So one of the reasons that we're bringing this to your attention is that the speed limit on that road is 70 kilometers an hour. If the speed limit at St. Joe's or Charles Spencer was 70 kilometers an hour, A, you'd be concerned. B, the students do walk despite our best efforts. Kids don't always like to stay at school. They like to disappear during the lunch period. So what they're doing is they're walking on the sidewalk until it runs out and then they're walking on the roadway until they can finally reach a sidewalk and come back. And so the kids are at quite a risk because they are walking on the roadway where semis are going 70 kilometers an hour, where it's a dangerous goods route and where there's no lights. There originally were traffic lights scheduled for here and the city did remove them because they had other priorities due to their data, right? But what we're saying is that this area is not safe to walk on, nor is it lit. And in fact, after sending in a number of requests to have the lights fixed here, these lights weren't even working. Like, so it was completely black and dark when people are walking on it. And if I were to go back 15 years, I had the same issue on 68th where there weren't lights, there weren't sidewalks. Number of kids were impacted. I actually met one of the kids last week by accident who was impacted by a vehicle that ran over them because they had to walk on the roadway because there wasn't a sidewalk built. And I just would not want to see that occur again up in this area. Like I said, I've biked through the area. I did it as recently as even Sunday afternoon. I've actually come across a number of our staff members that even tried to come up this way through Royal Oaks and over. And when somebody activates that simple traffic pedestrian crossing light, drivers just blow through it. They just are not stopping. And I asked her that question because I came across her by accident the one day and she just says they just keep going through. And that's been my same experience as I've biked and walked through that area, even wearing all that reflective gear, they'll just go through. Those lights work well. Maybe by a Roy Bickle school where the traffic is going slow, I've seen them work well in Calgary, Edmonton, Saskatoon, but they are not going to stop traffic because they're not bright enough for something like that. My main piece is to say that we would like to see something addressed for sidewalks even in winter here as we've built a gravel pad before in other places. And then to relook at traffic lights here, traffic lights here for the safety of the students and the staff. Anybody who's been a parent here who's actually come out of JP2, it's been quite a challenge to try to exit out of there in the morning or after school. And you have to very quickly try to get up to 70 plus kilometers an hour in your speed. You just wouldn't accept something like that to occur in the south on 68th and we're asking that it be relooked at on 132nd. And I know it's in the future, but I have to advocate for the safety of kids and some of our staff that don't have vehicles and access it. There's no transit in the area even. We have to pretty much try to bust most of the kids, but some of the kids still do want to walk.
I think basically what Mr. Gurman said is what it is. Really what we're here to ask for is the safety of the kids. I drive my kids to that school every day. I see them and I see the other kids walking, which on the street. So I don't think any of us would ever want to put children in harm. And this is what's happened. This is what happens when we build schools, when we build houses and the city grows. There's a cost to that. And that sidewalk is imperative to keep the kids safe. The rules in the school right now are, as we've explained, we started at, you know, 10, we're gonna have 11s there, we're gonna have 12s there. The 10s and 11s and 12s can leave the school at noon hour, you know, so they're free to go. And where are they going? They're going to up to the co-op. So really, it's really safety. It's not a dollar issue to us. It's safety, safety of the kids. So that's what we really want to stress. And it's gonna just keep growing and growing and growing. And that's why we put a school out there, you know, because we knew that area would grow and the developer is doing everything he can. We just need the city to help us.
Any questions for the delegation? Counselor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. Just to clarify, one thing that was said about the lights up there, I heard you mention that there's some lights there that aren't lit. Are you referring to like just regular lighting lights or?
Regular pole lighting and they were then since repaired after I sent it in a number of times, right?
Okay, so they are lit right now?
They're lit.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for the delegation? Seeing none? No, okay. You were flinching, Counselor O'Toole, so I thought you might have been going that way. Sure.
Construction done at the school right now? Is there anything more that needs to be built that was on the original docket? Encasing that's going in or fields being built or anything like that? The only thing that's could be on the upcoming docket is if we're looking at, we have to add portables to that school as it grows, as it continues to grow. If the portables are put on with a bylaw from the city here, we have to increase our parking there. So yeah, there will be construction of, I can guarantee you that school is going to continue to grow and we're gonna have to put on portables on there. And then we will have to do construction through the bylaw to increase our parking there. Thank you.
Counselor Clayton.
Mayor Given, a question for the Director of Infrastructure. Can you jog my memory? What are the numbers that we are aware of in regards to the traffic loads on that road? I know we have done some measurements of that and as well remind me where and when we thought the potential for any infrastructure for safety, lights, et cetera, were going to be installed?
Director Glavine?
Thank you, Counselor Clayton. We've asked our Transportation Engineering Supervisor here tonight to answer some of those specific questions, so I'm gonna defer to Wade Nellis.
Mr. Nellis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The lights at this location, as far as your question about traffic loads go, we're seeing an average daily traffic east-west here of about 10,000 vehicles per day. As far as lights being constructed, right now, we're waiting for additional development to take place north of this location as the north leg of this road is going to have to be readjusted into a final location. And at that point, we fully anticipate that signals will be constructed.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Can you tell me when those numbers were taken? I know when the bridge installation on 132nd was happening, I had driven out to that area town and the traffic was significantly different. And so since that bridge has reopened, from my understanding, it's, the traffic has reduced somewhat. But I'm curious, when were those numbers taken?
Mr. Nellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those numbers are from July of 2019, prior to the bridge closure.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? I guess I had one for administration, just in terms of the sidewalk or pathway network there. I believe that generally those things will proceed along with developments. Are there any gaps that will be closed by some of the recent development? I believe that the developer is bringing on some lots on the north side of 132nd. So will any of these gaps start to be closed up in terms of the path or sidewalk network? Mr. Nellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The impression I've been given by my compatriots in Engineering Services is that the parcel of land that was identified between the school and Trader Ridge is currently under development. Once that reaches its final grade, we're anticipating that to be next summer, then the following summer, we would anticipate installing a pathway along the 132nd Avenue.
So is that summer 2021 or summer 2020?
Summer 2021.
Counsel Friesen.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Mr. Nellis, a traffic count in July is maybe very different from a peak time at school when school's in. Has any study been done or any observation of what the road looks like during the times when kids are coming to and heading home from school?
Mr. Nellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we take a traffic count, we apply seasonal factors. So basically by compensating or by multiplying that number by a given factor, we compensate for the fact that that count was taken in the summertime as opposed to during a school year. So we're confident that that number reflects the number of cars that'll be on that roadway during a regular school day.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. Can I follow up with one, please? Thank you. Is there any consideration or is there anything that could be done that wouldn't be a lost cost if we did put something even just the lighted push button lights? Is there a temporary structure? Is there anything that could be done that would not be a throwaway cost when the road is reconfigured?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the upcoming revisions to the traffic bylaw, which council should see early in the new year, we have proposed to drop the speed limit of this road from 70 kilometers an hour to 60 kilometers an hour. Once that is complete, the rapid flashing beacons that we have at that location right now are perfectly acceptable by engineering standards for a road of this configuration and volume.
Cue Counselor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. In regards to the comments the delegation made about having the foresight to build the school where it was, you know, for future expansion, I think that's great foresight. It also is nice that you were given the land and so it was ideal that potentially the city wasn't catching up to development of where you situated your school. And that being said, we never want to put a cost on safety. I guess from my perspective, we simply haven't budgeted for this yet. And so that's not to say that council, in my opinion, doesn't have an appetite to work with you. I guess it's where do we find the money? And so I'm curious, I guess my question for Mr. Glavine or somebody from administration, is there any history or circumstances where there's been partnerships on safety things such as lights, et cetera, that were maybe not budgeted for the municipality to support on their own, but you know, made good sense in regards to safety?
Something maybe for Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mayor Given. None that I'm immediately aware of. That's something we'd have to go back and find out.
Great, thank you.
Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just a question. I know they're in the Transportation Master Plan, 132nd is supposed to be twinned, is that correct? And I was just wondering what would stimulate that growth to have that take place?
Director Glavine?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We'd have to look at the exact threshold. I don't recall exactly what triggers the 20, but it is definitely in the traffic master plan as a road that will be twinned as it forms part of our arterial network.
Just a follow-up. If we were to place traffic lights in here in the next couple of years, if that's what happens in the next couple of years, would that be engineered so we wouldn't have to make any changes in future years once the road gets twinned? Or is that lost cause money?
Mr. Nellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure there's design decisions we could make that would minimize the throwaway costs, but especially with the reorientation of the north leg of this road, I'm certain there would be considerable throwaway costs.
And I don't know whether, you know, obviously our friends from the district probably visit the site more often. Is the north exit, is there a north exit out of the school onto 108th?
Mr. Mayor, no, there is not. There is only the south exit. So what I would suggest so that you don't have throwaway costs, this road here has been engineered outside of St. John Paul II. So that, I'm not a traffic engineer, but that would be the first place where I'd actually put the lights. Because this is, although only a 10,000 person per day road, all of the drivers are young. So that throws in a completely different perspective than having 10,000 people coming off of 92nd Avenue. So that road is engineered and done and built out and so that you would be able to put a cost in there that's a lot cheaper. We have before, how would you fund it? I can give you an idea. I'm not the finance person, but I do know that we paid for this one section of the road of St. Catherine and that is something that you could do here. And it would be deferred revenue for years. So that's how it's recorded on our audited financial statement. We built a small section of the road, so we actually had two entrances into St. Catherine. And perhaps maybe the city could fund that and have a deferred revenue or deferred cost later on, but get the work done now for the safety of the individuals.
Counselor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Either for Mr. Nellis or Mr. Glavine, in regards to other opportunities in the meantime, has there been any, has anybody considered solar powered sort of pedestrian alert awareness type signs? I mean, obviously in the winter when students are walking, it's a shorter day frame of daylight. And I think that anything we can do to remind people that there are students walking would be beneficial. And so I'm just wondering if there's been any consideration for something like that.
Mr. Nellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of course, we've considered options at this site. With this particular location, it is illuminated and the sightlines are completely clear for over a kilometer and in almost all directions. So really, the installation of further infrastructure really doesn't seem warranted from our perspective. In addition, the rapid flashing beacons that are in place are suitable for this type of roadway.
So it does already have some signs that flash, I think?
Yeah. So right now at the crossing of 108th Street and 132nd Avenue, there's a set of solar powered battery or button operated beacons that start operating as soon as somebody hits the button and gives a desire to cross.
Thanks, Counsel Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. Excuse me, just a question for administration about the potential speed limit change. I fully appreciate that council might always throw a softball at you guys and change timelines because of that. But assuming that council doesn't direct any changes to what you guys are thinking as you're looking at amendments to the traffic bylaw, when would you anticipate us potentially seeing that speed limit change happen? I know you said early next year we'll be working on it, but I don't know when it might be completed. Again, I understand, as long as council doesn't throw curveballs at you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As soon as that bylaw is passed, we could have the signs changed within days.
So and so you mentioned that bylaw would be coming to us early in the new year. Will it be coming to us early in the new year in terms of completed bylaw that council can just adopt if it so chooses? Or it'll be coming to us in terms of there'll be further work after the first time we touch it early in the new year?
Mr. Nellis?
I'm not 100% sure I understand the question.
I think Counsel Bressi's question is, when council sees the traffic bylaw and should council not request additional changes or amendments and chooses to pass it on first viewing? When do you imagine that first viewing would be?
We're aiming for the first meeting in January.
I see my queue is clear. Any other questions for administration or for the delegation? I don't see any. And so, Mr. Gurman and colleagues, just to clarify, so you had a couple of requests with respect to the pedestrian network in the area, the signalization at 108th and 132nd and some signalization at, I'm not even sure what the road would be, but the road into JP2 and 132nd. Is that really summarize the three main concerns?
104A, which is St. Catherine, signalization at 108 and signalization into the north part of Arbor Hills.
Okay, so I didn't hear the 104A before, so I do want to check on that. So we have, so the entrance to St. Catherine's 104A that also enters to the north?
The sidewalk doesn't go to the intersection. So you basically go to here and here. There is no way for kids to actually get to the school, not even by going across here, nor is there a sidewalk to even go here through the neighborhood and back up to the school. They're basically nonexistent crosswalk that exists. So just go there and the sidewalk ends probably about 12 feet prior to the intersection of both sides.
Yeah. So aside from the fact that I'm 100% certain that there is actually a pathway down 108th, north-south, that aside, so there's also a request from the district for a signalized intersection at the 104A.
Yeah. Because there's no sidewalk that exists here, you can't come out of Arbor Hills, nor can you leave Arbor Hills this way and go through.
And so I guess for administration, do we know, does the capital plan foresee signalization at the 104A intersection, recognize that there is actually development to the north of that? Mr. Nellis?
We do anticipate that there'll probably be a crossing of some point there. It is not currently warranted for signals.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue. I just want to make sure that I had heard and that council had heard specifically what you wanted to highlight at the meeting. Counsel Friesen?
Thank you. So the other potential solution that I heard suggested was a temporary sidewalk or pathway to connect along the north side of 132nd. Would that be, has that been considered or would that be manageable to do a temporary gravelled sidewalk or something like that? Or what? Yeah, tell me about that, please.
Director Glavine?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I believe the land that we would locate the trail on would be dedicated by the developer to the city and it's not yet in that state where we've received the land. So we wouldn't be putting it on city land. We'd have to have potentially either a separate agreement with the developer or wait until that land is dedicated.
So is it the case that the developer hasn't dedicated the road right of way to the city yet?
I'd have to confirm all the details, but I know that the land is actively being serviced as we speak and we anticipate that being completed by the summer 2020.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. I'll try it again. I don't see anybody else in the queue this time. So was there anything else that our delegation wanted to present or to sum up?
I would just probably, Dad, it's also, it's a school with, you know, will be over 1,000 children, but it's also home to the KMSC Law Performing Arts Center, which is used by the whole community. And it's used early in the morning, it's used during the weekends, it's a fully serviceable area. So this is a school, but it's also a community area. And people are walking to these things and I just, I understand budgets as you do. I have no problems with that. We're dealing with some issues over at our world as well. But I can't, I can't put safety and money on the same line. And I can't put kids at risk. And I have to answer to those parents. And I'm not gonna make that call. I don't want to hear that call. When something does happen, we've had it happen over at the other area and the sidewalk was put in, I would say within a month after we lost a life over there. So I don't want to be the chair when I have to phone that family and I don't want to ever put money on safety. So that's what I'm leaving you with.
Thank you very much for being here and sharing the concerns of your school community and the district. We certainly appreciate it. And we do have an opportunity for any business arising that is actually towards the end of our agenda. And so you can stick around for the other things. Or you can watch the tape later to find out exactly how it went, or we can have somebody from administration, you know, inform you. But thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
So I don't believe we had any other scheduled delegations this evening. So we'll move into our one public hearing under item 14.1, bylaw 1260-14, an amendment to the land use bylaw and bylaw C 1395 be an amendment to the fees, rates and charges bylaw. I'd call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Administration is proposing to amend the land use bylaw and the fees and charges bylaw to reduce regulatory barriers and fees related to retail cannabis outlets and cannabis production facilities. At the October 29th Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee meeting, administration presented a report outlining the impacts of the first year of legalization and the following motions were passed. Committee directed administration to prepare amendments to the land use bylaw to move retail store cannabis from a discretionary use Infrastructure and Protective Services Committee to a discretionary use development officer in the local commercial land use district and to prepare amendments to the fees and fees, rates and charges bylaw to change the business license fee for cannabis production and distribution from 500 to 105 and the business license for cannabis retail store from 2,500 to 105. To date, the city has processed a total of 21 development permit applications for cannabis retail outlets. Of those, 11 have received business licenses and eight stores are open. Here you'll see a map of the permits issued for retail cannabis stores in Grand Prairie. Administration has worked with all applicants to identify potential sites for cannabis retail outlets that meet the regulations, which include setbacks from schools, separation distances in the downtown and anti clustering regulations. To date, the city has not processed or approved any application for a development permit that proposes a variance to the cannabis regulations. Administration has observed that cannabis retail outlets present no discernible impacts on adjacent properties. Customers appear to come and go without loitering. There are no order issues and public consumption of cannabis around the retail outlets has not been observed. In addition, the RCMP have confirmed that there have been no growing concerns from a law enforcement perspective. The calls related to trafficking and possession have decreased, while the calls related to drugs and driving are roughly the same. So the analysis of the land use bylaw amendment is that by moving the development officer's discretion, the development officer would consider only land use compatibility issues and refusals would indicate the reasons. You will note in the report that three retail store cannabis development permit applications were presented to IPC. Two were refused with a split 2-2 vote with no reasons for refusal stated. One of those was appealed and the decision was overturned due to lack of reasons. And with the fees and charges amendment, the initial rationale for the higher business license fee was related to the considerable amount of time and resources preparing for legalization of cannabis and the uncertainty around the future regulatory framework and enforcement. The initially anticipated consequences have not materialized. It is therefore recommended that the business license fees for cannabis-related uses be in line with other regulations. line with other regular businesses. It has been over a year since the retail sale and consumption of cannabis has been legalized. During that time, the city's had a number of retail stores open without land use compatibility or enforcement issues. Therefore, administration recommends council give three readings to bylaw C 1260-114 and C 1395B. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Downing. Any questions for administration from council? We'll have another opportunity before we close the public hearing, but are there any initial questions for administration? Seeing none, then we'll open up the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. This is an opportunity for anybody who has a perspective to share on these proposed changes to come forward. Is there anybody here this evening who wished to make a presentation in support of the proposed changes? Is there anybody here who wished to make a presentation in opposition to the proposed changes? And last one, third time, is there anybody who wished to make any presentation or representation with respect to these proposed changes to the land use bylaw and the fees and fees, rates, and charges bylaw with respect to cannabis retail? Seeing no one, I'll ask council one last time if there are any discussion or debate arising. Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. We'll move on to business arising, and I would look for a motion for first reading. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very, Mayor. Thank you much, Mayor Given. I give, I move the council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-114, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thank you very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate, sorry, no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
I'd move the council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-114.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on second reading? And to be clear, this, these are the proposed changes to the land use bylaw. I don't see any discussion or debate, so I'll call for the vote on second reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
Mayor Given, I move that we have third reading of bylaw C-1260-114 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. We have some new people in the room, so it's my chance to tell everybody that in order for us to have all three readings of a bylaw at the same council meeting, we must have a motion first to have third and final reading at this meeting. This motion must pass unanimously by the council members that are in chambers in order for us to move on to that third and final reading. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading this evening? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does carry unanimously. Counselor O'Toole?
Mayor Given, I move the council give third reading to bylaw 1260-114, C-1260-114, being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading of this land use bylaw amendment? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. So we have the associated amendments to the fees and charges bylaw. Can I get a motion for that? Counselor O'Toole, you going to continue?
Yes. Mayor Given, I move that we give first reading to bylaw C-1395B, being amendment to the fees, the rates, and the charges bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. No discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
Move that we give second reading to bylaw C-1395B.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on third, or sorry, on second reading? I'll just say that I'm going to vote in opposition at second reading. I appreciate that a number of my council colleagues probably won't be in support, and it really is about the principle. The federal government chose to create a completely new industry in Canada, and the federal government, the then federal government and current, now current federal government explicitly identified that a significant amount, 75% of the excise tax at the federal level was being left to provinces with the expectation that provinces would forward that new revenue source on to municipalities. And given the fact that municipalities receive approximately six cents out of every tax dollar collected in Canada, that revenue is badly needed. I actually don't make a case that it is, needs to be attached to specific costs. I think we are in order of government that cannot create new revenue sources for ourselves. We had the federal government create a new revenue source and explicitly say that they expected that municipalities would share in that. And in Alberta, our provincial government has chosen to capture that money rather than forwarding it on to municipalities. And because of that decision of our provincial government, I don't feel bad about saying that municipalities should reasonably have relatively high rates for this. And I have believed that for quite a while, and I'm going to continue to believe that. And so I'm going to make sure that I register my protest vote and have a chance to say that here at second reading. Any other discussion or debate? Counselor Pressy?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I largely, I really agree with what you're saying there. I'd go to different conclusion on the vote, and something I'd add to that is the federal government was originally going to take significantly less money in taxes from cannabis businesses, and then after pressure largely from FCM and municipalities, it changes to, it decided to forward significantly more money than it was originally going to give on towards the province. And when the federal government did, it made that decision, saying its expectation was that money would be shared with municipalities. And it very, it's not right that the province hasn't chosen to share this new revenue source with us. I think that that should be a point of advocacy for municipalities in Alberta. In fact, I'm planning to, after we're done these bylaws, make a follow-up motion that I think might help with that advocacy effort. That being said, I don't think it's right to punish our local businesses in the space for the poor decision of our provincial government. I think that they're already paying much higher tax than many other retailers, and I think that we should be arguing for a fair distribution of the taxes they're already paying, not adding taxes on to them. So I get where you're coming from, but I disagree on not voting in support of this motion.
Thanks, Counselor Pressy. Counselor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I as well appreciate what you're saying and do believe that we were, went down a path with the federal government and the provincial government where we were led to believe that there would be opportunities for the municipality to recover some of the revenue. And initially, when past council made amendments and put the business license rate to a fairly high rate, at that time, I personally was in support because of the fact that administration had spent countless hours preparing this document for council, and we could foresee that there was not going to be a lot of opportunity to get money from the province and from the feds, and this was an opportunity for us to allow us to recover, if not very much, but a little, little bit of the time and expense that had been put forward by the municipality. But saying that, my, my very largest reason for initially allowing unrestricted licenses was to allow the free enterprise of this type of retail to be successful and to not regulate them. And I think that, you know, by reducing the amount of the business license fee is sort of the next step to that. Initially, we had an unlimited amount of numbers, and we can see that the true test of retail success played out well here. We got a number that seems to be working, and although there are other licenses out there, people aren't opening a business just because they can. They're realizing that maybe we're sort of at where we need to be with the businesses. So that being said, to, to tax or increase the license fee, or keep it as it is, rather, to me, isn't necessary. And I think to encourage new businesses as the marketplace grows and as our region grows as a retail hub, I think that this is also another reason that people will be wanting to do business in Grand Prairie, because we are open for business, and our rates show that. So I won't be, I appreciate where you're coming from, but I will be supporting the motion for the reduction. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. I just, I'm not sure if it would be Director Manuel, but we did have a report at one stage about the city's costs at the startup of cannabis and the sunk costs essentially that we had. Director Manuel, do you have a sense of what that number was? I'm remembering that it was in the area of $90,000 to $100,000. Is that roughly accurate?
I would say that our startup costs, yeah, it was projected around that $100,000 range, maybe slightly higher for the lead up to legalization. One thing to recall is we did claim those expenses as part of a provincial, the province had a two-year grant that we applied for and were allocated funds.
Okay, thanks very much, and thanks for that, making that connection. Okay, I don't see any other discussion or debate. I feel happy to have been heard. Thank you, council. If there's no other discussion or debate, I'll call for the vote on second reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole? Just have to get your microphone there, Counselor O'Toole.
I thought my hearing aids were gone. I move that we have third reading of bylaw C 1395B at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. As with the previous motion, this is a motion to have third and final reading here this evening. It must pass unanimously, otherwise the motion would come back at a subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole?
Okay, I move that we, council give third reading to bylaw C-1395B, being an amendment to the fees, the rates, and the bylaw, charges bylaw.
Okay, thanks for my, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. And that motion does carry. Counselor Pressy?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to make a follow-up motion to this topic, and it is, I would move that council direct administration to report to the appropriate standing committee the overall weight of legal cannabis sold in Grand Prairie in 2019, and an estimated range of taxes this generated for senior levels of government. And just to speak to this, a part of our business license bylaw that we did put in was a requirement for retailers to report how much they're selling to us. And at the time, the reason we said that was to enable our advocacy efforts. We wanted to be able to say to government, this is how much was sold in our, in our region, so we should see a similar reinvestment coming back to our, back to our region. Talking to administration, it sounds like it's a, my understanding is it's a reasonable request to ask for definitely the total weight, so that has to get reported to us, and also an estimated range of taxes. That being said, they don't have all the information about how much it's sold for, so we won't get a precise number. I think having a rough number would be helpful for us as we do advocacy, because as Mayor Given brought up, there is some problems with the current distribution of tax revenue.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Pressy. Open for discussion or debate. Counselor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Probably for Director Manuel. Have we not been collecting this data that was part of the process? And if so, where are we at with that?
Director Manuel?
So, two points. The first is quarterly reporting requirement. So most these, frankly, all of these vendors, with the exception of one, weren't operating until Q3, so we're just starting to get reports in. We are working with the affected businesses to, on a format that meets the intent of the bylaw, but is not providing an undue amount of burden on them. So by, we should be in a position to meet the request that Counselor Pressy's asking for. We wouldn't be able to do it today, though, without, with an accurate representation of the market.
Counselor Clayton?
My question is for Counselor Pressy, just for clarification. What's the difference, what's the intent of your motion that's different than the current bylaw?
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not asking for any changes to bylaws. This is information that our administration's making anyways. I'm just, I just want to create a mechanism to make sure that it actually comes to council, and the council actually sees it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Pressy, I don't see anybody else in the queue on Counselor Pressy's motion. Then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Was there any other business arising on this topic? Seeing none, then we're closed with that public hearing. We'll move on to delegation business. So we did have one scheduled delegation, our friends from the Catholic District. Counselor Pressy?
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. I'm gonna, I think there were a few issues brought up. I'll start with just one, and that is, I would move that council direct administration to report to the appropriate standing committee, potential options, costs, and funding sources to complete, to complete pedestrian links between St. John Paul II Catholic High School and Trader Ridge in 2020. So there's a little bit of discussion about that, about some of the challenges and some of the possibilities there. It sounds like it's going to be in 2021. I don't know if I'm comfortable waiting that long to get these linkages done, especially if it's, if we're able to do it in 2020 without it being a major prohibitive cost or without there being major throwaway costs. So maybe it's possible, maybe it's not, but I definitely want to find out more.
And so the intent of your motion is for it to be specific to that one issue rather than tying all the issues together. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right, and I might make a motion about other issues. We'll, we'll see, but let's talk about them one at a time. It's my suggestion.
Okay, okay, so council, Counselor Pressy's motion specific to that east-west connection along 132nd Avenue, and asking administration for alternatives and options in order to see that work done in 2020. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Counselor Friesen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. That's a great motion. Thank you very much, Counselor Pressy, for making it. I wanted to do something similar. I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Willet when he said that there's no price tag to be put on safety. And, and regardless of what happens with the, the crosswalks or the speed on the road, I think that having the appropriate pedestrian linkages is critical, particularly if kids are heading down back and forth to go up for lunch or whatever, as I know the number of times we ran across the bypass to head to McDonald's from the comp, right? So if, no, well, I never did. So thank you. I would be supporting this motion.
Thanks, Counselor Friesen. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Was there any other business arising? Counselor Pressy?
Thank you. It's actually going to be a similar one, but I thought I'd divide them out, so I think they are slightly different, and that is, direct administration to report back the appropriate standing committee, potential options, costs, and funding sources to complete pedestrian links between St. Catherine's School and Trader Ridge in 2020.
Thanks, Counselor Pressy. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Again, intentionally narrow in scope and specific, sorry, I should say, intentionally specific. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Was there any other business arising? Seeing nobody ringing in, then we will move on. Just under the wire, Counselor Pressy?
Well, I will make a, I will make a motion that we receive this report for information. I think it does appropriate to acknowledge the rest, the rest of the requests, and just, just speak a little bit to why I'm not making a motion about filling out the requests this time. In terms of, I really do get the sentiment that safety is worth being invested, is worth investing in, and I never want to shortchange safety. At the same time, I think one of the very hard things about our job when it comes to safety is, we've still got limited money, and where is I going to have the most bang for its buck in the community? There's, we're seeing significantly increased investment in not just our roads, which increase safety, but also our RCMP and other initiatives around the community. And for me, it's hard to justify spending the amount of money, the sunk costs we see putting in full standard lights before they're, before they're needed. I think that might create more safety elsewhere in the neighborhoods. This isn't about saying, hey, I don't want to make kids safe, saying that I think there might be more, there might be other ways to spend this money that will better and have safety elsewhere in the community. So it's hard for me to just be making a motion to skip this report for information, but I think that's the right decision for now.
Thanks, Counselor Pressy. Any other discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does carry. So we will see those other two reports come to city standing committee, and I would imagine that we would inform the district of when those comes, so they can be aware, be informed. But we'll move on to council member reports. Council, I know a couple of you informed me that you didn't have any external reports. So are there any reports from our external agencies, boards, and commissions? Counselor Pressy?
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. I can report that I went to my very first meeting with the Sport Connector, and that's a fun board that I was excited to scoop up from Counselor Friesen. I'm still getting my feet under it. I think that the two things, two significant things that we talked about at our board meeting was, one, just some of the consequences of the provincial budget, not on the Grand Prairie Sport Connector particularly, because it doesn't receive any, any, any funding directly from the province, but on its partner organizations, sport's seen approximately a 10% decline in its funding. And most significantly, though, wasn't actually the loss of funding. It was the Alberta Sport Connection was dissolved, and that's the organization that's enabled a lot of sport organizations across the province. It's also the organization that had contracts for a number of- number of teachers of various seminars. So, the Grand Prairie Sport Connection actually had to cancel a few events that it had planned, because all of a sudden, the provincial entity that it was working with just dissolved. So, that was a challenge for it. The other, the big thing that we're going to be working on the next couple of months is some risk management policies. Still relatively new organization, still learning which risks it might, it might experience. So, we're going to start quantifying those and working on some management. And then it wasn't specific to the board meeting, but I'll also highlight that the Sport Connector had its first sports for, Sport North Conference last weekend. And it was a really great event, seeing the room filled with coaches and filled with people who organize sport in our community and region, coming together with people who were brought in from all across the country to give great teaching and great information on everything from sports nutrition to running proper practices for athletes, to how do you make sure that practices are run in such a way that female athletes won't get hurt doing drills that were designed for male athletes, to how do you manage risk, to how do you raise sponsorship. It was a really great event, and I hope the community hears about it, and we see many more of our sports organizers show up the next time it happens.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. Any other reports from our external agencies, boards, and commissions? Counselor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just a very brief one. I had an opportunity to meet with the new executive director of Grand Prairie Regional Tourism, as well as the chair of the board, Jonathan Clarkson, and the vice chair, Karina Garmshide. So, I look forward to attending my first meeting with that organization this week. But it was a great meeting. The new executive director brings great experience to the organization, so I look forward to doing great work with them. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. If there was nobody else, then we'll go to council member roundtable, and we'll start with Counselor Friesen.
Thank you very much. I was able to go too, and it's coincidental that you fellows are here tonight from, from the Catholic School District. But I did go to the, the opening of the Performing Arts Center and the naming of KMSC Performing Arts Center. I think it is a fantastic example of using partnerships in our community, and even more so than just the naming rights. But I also happened to attend this past couple of weeks, my first production there. And this is very, theater, as you all know, is very near and dear to my heart. I've been volunteering. That was my, my first organization that I ever volunteered with in Grand Prairie back in the eighties, and I still do. So, to see a partnership with GPLT in running and managing the theater, to have had a production in there that supports a fantastic, it was in support of Bear Creek Folk Festival. And they actually came to my building and held rehearsals there and held their closing party there the other night. And, and to have the naming by a wonderful business in our community. I just think you have knocked it out of the park with, with your Performing Arts Center, and I thank you for that. The other really cool thing that I got to go to was the Friendship Center Salvation Army Community Kitchen ribbon cutting. And it's great to see organizations in the community who are doing similar things come together to better be able to provide coverage of a much-needed, very important staple, like feeding people. And more than it being really a soup kitchen, they're really hoping that it'll also attract, for instance, students from the college who just want a home-cooked meal once in a while. So, the community is always invited to the Friendship Center to have a meal with them. And it's now open, I think it was from 7:00 AM till, till after supper. And so, it just, what, what a great couple of weeks I had with these partnership kind of things in the community. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor Friesen. Counselor Clayton.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I had, I have a couple of things I wanted to touch base on. I had an opportunity to attend the retirement celebration for Carmen Haxsted, and many of you in the room know him. Definitely an evening of celebration, as this gentleman is, through many years of philanthropic initiatives and fundraising initiative, has raised money from everybody from the art gallery to the hospital foundation, to Evergreen Park, to the college, to Rotary, to Center 2000. And truly, an evening of celebration for him. And so, I was very privileged to be part of that celebration and happy to call him a friend. And he will be dearly missed in the fundraising world, however. Looking forward to seeing him focusing more time on his artwork and, and which in turn is always enjoyable to go and to see. And he has a big show coming up this fall, so almost a year from now. But congratulations to him, and thank you for the years that he has put forward into our community. I just also wanted to touch briefly, because I'm sure a couple other people will touch on it, but last week with fellow counselors, Friesen, Bressley, Plott, No Toole, had the opportunity to attend my first Family and Children's Social Services Conference. It, Counselor Bressi, it came highly recommended from him. So, I was really happy to be there and experience something that I hadn't been to before. There was a couple of takeaways for me personally. I went to a, a great session on Alberta Network of Public Housing Agencies. Some great information there that was really, in my opinion, useful as we go down the path of affordable housing as well. Attended a session that was very useful information, and from my understanding, other people may touch on it, but informative session on a Men's Shed Initiative that I thought was a sort of a great piece of information. So, I really enjoyed that conference as well. I just wanted to mention, I attended a meeting of the Grand Prairie 100 Women That Care. So, it's an organization of local women that raise money and donate the funds directly to local charities. So, I wanted to send a kudos out to them for the work they're doing in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I attended a number of things over the last two weeks. And one of them I just want to bring up is, I belong to, or in part sit on, the Community Action to End Poverty. About two years ago, we sat around the table and come up with this idea that maybe we should have a one central kitchen for all of the resources to be able to support each other. And 16 months ago, the Jerry Napier, Peter Kim from Salvation Army, and Tammy Wensall from the city, sat at this table and redefined what we really needed. And once again, we were able to open up the ribbon cutting for the GP Friendship Center and Salvation Army. So, it took a little time. There's some legal aspects behind it, and housing, and staffing, and all that. But it, just a little over two years, and we got it happening. So, that was a pretty warm, fuzzy feeling in that particular day. I also attended the FCSS Resilient People, Strong Communities Seminar, and a week-long of courses and stuff. And the Men's Shed was an idea that started out in Manitoba, and it's grown. I understand that it's still going very well. There is a number of them operating in Ebbington right now, and it sounds like there's somebody in Grand Prairie that's looking at starting one up, where there's no actual organization. There's a time, and there's an end, and men can come and either work on stuff, play cards, or whatever their heart desires. But it's a way for people to join, and there's no age limit. I think the youngest one that attends in Ebbington is 14 years old, and he gives a different perspective to the seniors as well. And I do want to highlight, we attended another session on Tough Enough to Talk About It. It was originally, of course, a group called Men at Risk that was developed by a person here in Grand Prairie. And once again, in the province, people picked up on it, and they tweaked it with permission. And it's good to know that we have the resources here in Grand Prairie, the people to develop a suicide prevention, suicide support group. And it's taken off, and it's all over Canada right now. They just changed the name because they felt that it was Men at Risk was just dealing with men when it actually has to deal with women as well. So, Tough Enough to Talk About It. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Bressi.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Given. Man, I can't go last. I keep on getting scooped on these stories.
Well, you know.
I was going to pass it, but Counselor Clayton just said I've never shorted words, so I guess I'll share two stories anyways. I'll, one was, I really loved the theater event, and I think the moment that blew me away was, for those that saw Mamma Mia last year, there was some absolutely great talent, including by our two lead actresses. And I was blown away when I was at the theater naming, and one of those actresses performed was introduced as being in grade 12, which means, if I'm doing my math right, she was in grade 11 when she did Mamma Mia. And I literally didn't believe it. I had to go ask three different people if she was actually in high school, then go ask her directly, because the talent I saw, I couldn't believe in that, in that young age. And I, and there were, and all the other acts and pieces of entertainment we saw that night were just as superb. I couldn't believe the talent of young people in our community. And I'm so glad that there's investment in helping them, helping them thrive. The session I'll highlight from, from FCSS had to do with youth assets. And again, it's appropriate seeing some school board gentlemen in our room. And I really enjoyed a session that was about assets that youth have in their lives. And there's peer-reviewed research that sets, that's, there's a couple of different models. The one we were learning about is 40 different resiliency assets kids can have in their life. Everything from involvement in, in sport to time at home around family, to non-parental adults involved in the life, to optimism about their future. And what a number of communities, including recently Sylvan Lake, do is they partner with their local school boards, and they survey every kid in their community above a certain age to see how many assets those kids have in their lives. And why it's valuable is because there's peer-reviewed research showing that, linking the amount of assets kids have to positive outcomes future, forward in their life. And what mapping it out and working with our school boards to get a peek of where kids are at does is, A, it shows what types of assets are really lacking in a community. It gives both schools and the city and various nonprofits and other groups abilities to know where we need to increase our investment in youth. And the other thing it does is it lets, if you do it every couple of years, it lets you track what's happening in your youth over time. And I think it's a good, it's a good record of what's going on to see if you are appropriately investing in youth, or if you need to invest more in them over time. So, it's a really interesting model that you might see me bring into community in the future. I think it might be worth approaching our school partners and seeing if there's interest in participating in something like that together.
Thanks, Counselor Bressi. I'll just report on a couple of items that haven't been previously mentioned. I attended the Breakfast with the Guys, I believe it was 11th Annual Breakfast with the Guys, held this year at Grand Prairie Regional College. A great event about men and guys and boys, talking about their attitudes and behavior towards women. Appreciated the fact that it's so well-supported by so many members of our community. I see some of them here today who were there that morning. But it is, I think, vital conversations to be had about, about men's attitudes towards women and men choosing to be interveners when they see expressed attitudes or behaviors that are inappropriate. I also had an opportunity to record an interview with a reporter from the Financial Post, who was in Grand Prairie looking at Western sentiment, sentiment. And speaking of sediment, the next day, I was at the opening of the Alberta Sand and Gravel Association. I thought that was pretty good, to bring greetings on behalf of council. And it's amazing the things that you learn. The association obviously represents those who have interest in sand and gravel, like Wapiti or Knelson, those who service in lots of different city projects. And one of the things that was highlighted by the association was the amount that their members pay in community aggregate levy. And so, this is a, a levy that was added to the industry based on tonnage of aggregate that is moved, that is remitted to the municipality in which the aggregate deposits are found. In our area, that is the MD of Greenview and the County of Grand Prairie. And they made a point at the association of highlighting the fact that in the 2018 year, the split, it was approximately 1.6 million dollars that the industry paid that was split between those two municipalities. So, just a reminder that there are these other sources of revenue that are not equally distributed across the region or across different municipalities. So, it was interesting to learn that. And in terms of learning, I wanted to report to council, I did attend the National League of Cities Conference. I didn't attend FCM this year. I chose to instead go to the US counterpart for that national organization representing cities down in the States. It was a enlightening event in a number of different cases. As with all these conferences, you pick some events by their name and sessions, and you go to them, and then find out there's something slightly different than you thought. An example of that was one called Safer Cities Through Design, which I thought, hey, that's perfect. That's SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. I'm interested to see what the state of the art is in that. And I went, and it was a session put on by professional architects, really talking about building design in the context of gun violence, which was something completely out of the realm of what I had imagined that it was. But it demonstrated how the needs of different communities are different from place to place. There were some other sessions that were much more relevant to, to City of Grand Prairie. I attended another one called How to Gather the Opinions of Hard-to-Reach Citizens. And the takeaway idea that was really interesting to me was partnering with other community organizations and enlisting them to do community engagement within their organization. So, faith-based communities, non-traditional areas where you wouldn't imagine the city going to do community outreach or engagement or gather feedback and input, actually engaging those organizations to do it on the city's behalf and send that information forward. So, I thought that that could be an interesting model that could, could ensure that some of the quiet voices that we don't always hear at city-town halls and open houses or through surveys actually get reflected in the information that gets forward to council. But there were many, many other sessions that were very valuable and worthwhile, and I'll share that information with council and be bringing some things to the council and committee table. With that, I will call our meeting. Oh, Counselor Clayton would like the last word.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just wanted to thank administration and all the employees that were part of the Santa's Parade yesterday, as well as the kickoff to Christmas and the tree lighting. Many of us marched the parade and, and handed out hot chocolate. And, I mean, the weather was perfect, and the people and the children that were there really enjoyed it. The event this year at Revolution Place with the support of the Storm Hockey Players was the best I've seen that event. They had a live band, and, and there was thousands of people there. Then followed by the Battle of the Badge, which badges, but I didn't hear who won. The Fire, Fire beat the RCMP, all right. Oh, yeah, it was like 14-4 or something I saw. I just didn't see.
13-7, I think.
There you go. Anyways, so, thank you to everyone that was part of that organization and everyone that supported it. It was a great event. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton for highlighting that. Certainly to the Downtown Association for organizing, and for our QP Local for volunteering as they do every year to marshal that parade outside of their working hours. With that, then we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.